Alright, so we'll call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, August 24th to order. If I could ask everybody to stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the free and public liberty of our nation, our land, and the individual, the liberty and justice for our
Alright, roll call please.
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Alex Dollypally.
Here.
Zach Curry.
Here.
Scott Booth.
Here.
Karen Munstap.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Okay, so we note Ellen Mauer and Steven Arthur are absent this evening. We'll also appoint Karen Munstap as Secretary of Pro Tatum in Ellen's absence. Alright, our agenda this evening, really nothing specific from the President's report, except maybe a few minor comments. We'll have our new cast of student school board representatives who I'm sure will tell us all about the exciting first week of school. Superintendent's report, we'll open it up with public comment. Anybody would like to speak? We'll approve the consent vote agenda which was reviewed earlier in the month in committee, and then brief updates from program and personnel and facilities. Anything from property? Steven's not here, so nothing on property, a little bit on seed all, and IASB? Okay, alright, so relatively straightforward agenda. Any questions before start? Alright, so President's report, I'm just gonna echo your comments of earlier. Tonight we honor Jess Porras who is retiring. My first comments are, remember, this is an academic institution and you are not allowed to fail retirement, okay? I realize that is a challenge for you, but you know, every once in a while you get to work with a person that is just a real genuine good guy, that does a good job, and if I was to describe Jess, I think that's what I'd say. A genuine, I mean even for a Yankee fan, okay? Not very often you use genuine good guy and Yankee fan in the same sentence, okay? But in this case, you know, Prentice said earlier that you will be missed, and you will, but I would take that one step further, and you will not be replaced, okay? People like you are just not possible to replace. So, I know in my years here, one of the things I've enjoyed the most is working with you. I just knew the high quality of the work that you did. I knew the integrity that you had with everything that you brought to us, and we will definitely miss that. So, Mark, you have big shoes to fill. I know you're up for the task, but this is just a great guys who's been absolute pleasure to work with. Alright, anybody else want to add anything? Anybody else wanna add anything?
No, I might start crying, so I don't wanna...
Yeah, don't do that. You're supposed to have a tough guy image, you know? Okay.
Okay, I will say one thing. Jess and I go back a little ways, and in many ways I can, I don't like to use the word blame, but it's because of Jess I'm sitting at this table, and I sat at a previous board table. Nineteen ninety-three was it?
It was a while ago.
It was a while ago. Jess was serving a one-year interim superintendentcy at District Seventy-Three, and convinced me, or at least encouraged me, to go for one of a couple of open seats on the school board at that point in time. And from there, we worked together for a number of years in this similar role, school board, and Jess was the chief business official at that point in time. Had a ball working with him then, and then a few years later, when the opportunity to come onboard with this board came about, lo and behold, who did I have to sit across the board table from? But Jess Porras again, and I'll echo all the comments. I think that the term integrity is probably the one that I think of first when I think of Jess, but he is a good guy, and we'll miss you a lot, and hope to see you around town, and come back and help us again.
Where are we going next, Jim?
I don't know. We were talking about trying to find another, you know, I'd have to move to go to another school district to work with Jess and another board, but maybe he'll come help us at Harper or something. So, all the best to you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, so, our new school board, student school board reps, so I'll ask each of you to give an update. I have no idea how you're gonna coordinate this, but if you could, 'cause this is your first time, why don't you just let us know your name, which school you're at, and maybe one other thing you wanna share with us?
Hi, my name is Julie Bliss, and I'm from Vernon Hills High School, and I'm really excited to be here, so thank you for the opportunity.
Well, you go right down the list, and then we'll let you know your update. Oh, okay. I'm Emily Finkel. I also go to Vernon Hills High School, and I'm also excited
to be here.
I'm Zachary Karisenberger, and I'm also from Vernon Hills High School, and if you go to the football game on Friday, you can hear me singing the National Anthem.
I'm New Harp Adkey, and I'm from Libertyville High School, and I just wanna say that it's such an honor to be a representative to the Board of Education, and I'm looking forward to experiencing the progress that we'll have this year.
I'm Amelia Schmey. I'm from Libertyville, and I'm in best bodies at my school, and that's really important to me.
Hi, I'm Luke Corneby. I'm also senior at LHS this year, and I'm very excited and looking forward to spend the school year with you guys.
Good, great. Okay, so I assume there's updates tonight, Vernon Hills. Why don't you guys go?
Okay, so for the updates from Vernon Hills for tonight is that for the DLS program that's going on, it's going really well at our school, and it's much more convenient for students to access PowerPoints and other media necessary in classrooms. So, it's something that students have really been appreciating and has really made our life easier. Also, updates in our school is that we've had foyer upgrades for connectivity. So, we have charging stations for students, new tables to make room of space where students can eat, and recharge computers, and also students are definitely making use of the upgrades, and I constantly see people like using all our new upgrades and making use of the space, and it's really great. Also, the D-128 Foundation helped with some innovative learning spaces in our rooms 1203, 2212, in the CRC, and in the library here. So, in the library here, we made upgrades with the new tables, as you can see, that no longer have the desktop computers, and also there are charging stations in their place so that we can use our Chromebooks. As for the CRC, which is our College Resource Center, it has more tables for students to sit there and ask for help while working on applications. And also, we call our room 2212 our green room, because it has a back wall that has a whiteboard surface, and it's painted green, and it has like tables and chairs that are all on wheels, so it makes for a really good collaborative space, and it allows for a much more comfortable learning environment, because students are less intimidated by their surroundings, and they can really make use of the space. Also, we have the new security bollards in the front of the school, and the students don't really know what they are, but it's definitely something good that can keep us safe from any cars driving into the building. Also, we have open house on September eighth, and all seniors also met on the first day of school to talk about college placement, and in English electives, all seniors are having a unit on writing college essays. So, students found the college meeting generally helpful, especially with the information like FERCBA that we've never heard of before, and also the college essay workshop is really helpful for students.
In regards to student activities, the kickoff dance and lip sync contest, the senior lip sync contest is on this Saturday, August twenty-ninth. There are five lip sync groups participating this year, which is the largest number in the past couple of years since we've been in high school. If you happen to attend, vote for my group. This summer, we had students travel to Uganda. I was lucky enough to go with the group, and it was an incredible experience. I didn't like know how to condense it into a couple bullet points, but it was really, really cool. We stayed on campus at Saint Jerome with like our sister school there, so we were able to interact with the kids all hours of the day. It was awesome. And we made a point to visit families and interview any students sponsored by people from Vernon Hills High School and from the Vernon Hills area, so that we could come back and give their sponsors information about them, so that they have a better relationship with them. We had a physical project, which was painting a first and second grade building, and then at the end, for something like sort of fun, we did a three-day safari at Marchison Falls at National Park, which was really, really cool. Another trip that happened this summer was the District One Twenty-eight students and staff went to China. There's an article about them, but they explored Beijing, and the students stayed with host families, and our school spent time working in conjunction with a high school there. They got to observe classes and lessons, which is similar. We visited a couple of high schools while we were in Uganda, so I thought it was cool if the trips were kinda similar. And between those two trips and the choir trips to France over spring break, we hit three continents this year. It's pretty cool. Freshman Student Council elections are next week, and our first class program begins this week, Friday, and this year our theme is hashtag VH-Give, which started last year, and we're trying to like open it up to social media. And this year, instead of first class leaders, they're called hashtag VH-Give ambassadors, and all of our efforts will benefit our sister school, Saint Jerome, in Africa. We're hoping to use all the money raised through first class this year to pay for food at Saint Jerome for a hundred days, so we'll see. And fine arts-wise, the musical is just starting. It's Little Shop of Horrors, and the dance clinic was today. Auditions are Wednesday and Thursday, and then Fridays, callbacks and the cast list. For choir, this is our first year with a fall concert, because we usually have a festival with the middle schools in the fall, so the fall concert is all songs without words. It's gonna be interesting.
Continuing on news for fine arts, this year's chamber choir retreat, every year we have a retreat with the chamber choir at the end of August. It's usually the first or second weekend of the school year, but that's been moved to the end of September this year due to scheduling conflicts, so that's been pushed back a month. And otherwise, pep band and drum line began rehearsal at the very beginning of August, so they will be more than ready for our first football game on Friday. Jumping into sports news, a huge distinct honor for our sports teams, all of our winter sports, winter and spring sport teams received all academic honors. This means the teams had a cumulative GPA of three point oh or higher, which is really impressive. That includes all sports, both guys and girls, for winter and spring. And current sports, our golf team, boys' golf team went to state for the first time last year, so they had a great year last year, and they're continuing on that this year. They had their first competition, tournament at Glen Bar North last week, and they took the championship there. Out of ten teams, they took first place, which is really impressive. And our first football game will be on Friday night, as you heard, against Grayslake Central High School. And in academic team news, big news for FBLA, we had the National Leadership Convention and competition in June and July. This is a four or five-day process. I did not go this year, but I went last year, and I know it's an amazing experience. We had more kids go than ever before. We had, I believe, eighteen students attend along with two faculty members, and we had two events placed first at Nationals, so that means they're top events in the entire country. Following that, there was initially thirty-four events placed at Area, which is a huge number. This was our biggest year for FBLA this past year. Forty students attending at state, almost doubling from the previous year, and eighteen at Nationals, as I mentioned, FBLA's biggest and most successful year. And national champions in FBLA at this competition were, we took first place for Emerging Business Issues, Michael Kokinis, Derek Zing, and Oliver Long, all juniors took first place at Nationals. Also, Business Ethics, Operajitha Adaraju, Ashwini Despante, and Pavani Pandravada, all juniors once again. And I'd just like to, one last thing, mirror what Julie was saying about the Chromebooks. I know it's a, it's a huge help, and the students really appreciate it, and it's made a huge impact already. All of the, all of the teachers have been transitioning to more electronic, you know, curriculum's less paper printed out stuff. It's a lot easier for organization, it's a lot easier for learning, and it's, we really appreciate it.
So, in regards to Libertyville High School athletics, LHS would like to extend its congratulations to a considerable amount of both winter and spring athletic teams that receive the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Awards, which is given for a GPA of three point oh or higher during their seasons. And the LHS football team had its first scrimmage on Friday, and it's currently practicing in preparation for its first game on August twenty-eighth, this Friday, at home versus Elk Grove. And the LHS volleyball team hosted a sand volleyball tournament on Saturday as a fundraiser, and there was a lot of positive feedback from it, and LHS wishes them luck as their season begins again, and they will be playing in the crosstown invite this Friday. And as for other fall sports teams, they all began practices before school started, even a week before, and they're looking to start and continue their competition.
Okay, so as far as extracurriculars and student activities go, we have a really active Student Council at Libertyville High School, and right now they're working on a project that are called Spirit Packs that we've never done before. So, basically what it is, is that there's five themed shirts and five accessories that go with each shirt, one for each home game, and the pack's gonna cost fifty dollars, which is about ten dollars for each game, and their attempt to up-school spear and get more people dressing up for the football games and coming and attending, while still raising money for the school, because all the money made from the Spirit Packs is gonna be going back to the school and student body. In addition to Student Council freshman elections are beginning in the next week, so we're excited for that. Link Crew had a very successful freshman orientation, and our Link Crew at LHS is when a junior and a senior leader are paired with eight freshman students, and they're responsible for like getting the freshmen acclimated to high school and showing them around the school. I'm a Link Crew leader, and I know that we're all really looking forward to getting to know our freshmen, like seeing them adjust to high school, 'cause I know it's a really big jump from middle school to high school. And then, yeah, most other clubs are preparing to meet this week or next week, so there'll be more news about that next time.
As far as inside the school goes, in the building, where all, all the kids were just getting in the back of, into the swing of things this past week, because they have to adjust to the schedules, it's really busy for freshmen and new kids, so we're all looking forward to a new year of academic challenge and fun. So, the first day of school, in regard to the senior class, went much more smoothly compared to years past, with high turnout visible for the class panoramic picture at the LHS Stadium Field, and there were no significant or apparent incidents of like hazing of freshmen that we know have occurred in the past, so we're glad about that. We were much more well behaved this year, I feel.
You're good, Jim.
Link Crew did help with that, because like Amelia mentioned, there's this considerable amount of upperclassmen dedicated to like sticking out for the freshmen and helping them in their transition. So, part of the first day of school is if you're a Link Crew leader, you're supposed to wear your Link Crew shirt, in like opposition to some of the more inappropriate traditions that others seniors tend to do, so that was nice. Now, like VHHS mentioned, every student now has a Chromebook that we bring with us to class every day, and we use almost every day at school, not in all classes every single time, but we will use them in almost all classes. It seems as if a lot of teachers are figuring out new ways to use it and are kind of enjoying that, what adds to the curriculum. We, like Vernon Hills mentioned, we do use them to take notes in class, do our homework online, and new textbooks are online, so they have been, they have proven very useful. Thank you.
Alright, reach out. Set the first week or the first semester. Talk about getting out of the box strong. Alright, Superintendent's report.
Okay, continuing on with the opening of school, Dr. Scott was not able to join us this evening, but I did ask Dr. Gilliam if he had any comments from his principal's perspective about the opening of school. So, John, if you wanna share anything?
Well, they stole everything I was gonna share, which is good. We clearly chose six good student board reps. And I've talked to Dr. Scott, and I think she and I both agree that this year has started off remarkably well. I, you know, last year was my first year, and looking back, would say that there's many highlights, but easily by far, my most favorite time of year is the fall, and I think my most favorite week of the year was last week, when these guys get back into the, into the swing of things, as Luke was saying. We have a relatively small new staff, so we've got a lot of consistency. Things here started off remarkably well. These guys mentioned the DLS. There's a buzz about those things, so if anyone was wondering how that's going, what these six said rings true with just about everybody. I'll just mention a couple things. We, I challenged our seniors, I was able to meet with our seniors on the first day of school, and challenged them with the idea that our school goes as they go. And we have a great senior class with a lot of leaders in addition to these three, and I'm expecting a lot from them. And that transitions into something to challenge our staff with, and that's two simple words, watch this, and maybe in a couple different ways. One, encouraged our staff to watch what these guys are doing, because I know at our place and at Libertyville, these kids are doing amazing things. And often we take that for granted, and don't stop to just look at some of the remarkable things that they're doing. So, good job to you guys, and I know that you'll continue that this year. And then the other thing is, students come into these buildings with a sense of anticipation, watching what we're doing, so I challenged us as, as leaders and as teachers to make sure that we're approaching our jobs in a way that gets the most out of them, and prepares them most significantly and well for their endeavors coming up. So, a great start, looking forward to a good year.
And at a district level, I just wanna echo what everyone else has said. I wanna thank Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Scott and their administrative teams and the teachers, support staff, and of course, more importantly, the students for an excellent start at, at both schools. It's great that we have principals that really do care about you and really do love you guys. I mean, they really do, but they'll still challenge you to do better, and that's one of the reasons we love Dr. Gilliam and Dr. Scott, is they really set that bar high for you, and you always manage to get there, and we set the bar higher the next year. But they did an incredible job at opening day with staff coming back, and certainly with the students coming back, and we had a great district opening day. We appreciate Pat making time in his schedule to come and address the staff too, and just two great days of preparation for all of you to come in, but a lot of work since the end of school by support staff and administrators to get ready for the opening of school, so we make sure that we give them a big pat on the back too. So, thanks to everyone that was involved in that. I don't know, Pat, if you had anything you wanted to add?
No, I thought it was great. I know the first day when I was there, I just loved the energy in the room, and it's always so much fun to see everybody come back, well-rested, ready to go, and you know, it was just, it was a really, really wonderful event, so glad I could be part of it.
Great, job well done. Thanks, John. Okay, continuing on with good news. I won't repeat some of the things that you guys have said, which is great, because it's always nice to hear it from you. But LHS senior Zachary Jenkins received a gold medal in Technical Computer Applications at the Fifty-Second Annual National Leadership and Skills Conference, held June twentieth to twenty-sixth in Louisville, Kentucky. The Skills USA Championship is the showcase for the best career in technical students in the nation. Zachary competed as a member of the Lake County High School's Technology Campus Team, so again, national champion, gold medal in Technical Computer Applications, so it's really incredible. So, congratulations to Zachary. VHHS Two Thousand Fifteen graduate Lim Turner, see if you guys know this, made a half-court basketball shot, listen to this, and won free tuition at Ball State University. Lim's winning shot was made during Ball State's freshman welcome activities, so it pays to take the half-court shot that they offer you to do that. That is outstanding. And as the students mentioned, at both schools, we're so proud of our student athletes and also our students in the fine arts, but the IHSA formally recognizes our teams who, as you mentioned, have a three point oh or higher GPA, and so they become all-state academic teams, and virtually all of our winter and spring sports are in there this year, so that's really great news. So, congratulations, everyone, for an outstanding start of school. And we're looking forward to having our monthly lunches with you. Usually Dr. Gertie or one of the other board members, and Dr. Scott, Dr. Gilliam, myself, we'll have lunch. We get a chance to get to know you, and we love to listen to you and ask you questions as well, and learn from you, so we'll look forward to that as well. Okay, next on the superintendent's agenda this evening is, wanna make sure the community maybe remembers, as we remind them, for the past few years, several years ago, two contracts ago, we worked with our teachers' union to develop what has become probably one of the most innovative performance recognition bonus programs in the state and in the country. As I've pointed out to the board a number of times, this has been adapted by a number of other school districts, but never at the level that we've done. And here in the concept behind a performance recognition bonus is that support staff, teachers, administrators, and students together would continue to look at continual improvement in four or five key areas that matter, that matter to our communities, that matter to us internally. Since we no longer have the Prairie State Achievement Exam, we have four categories now that we recognize, but we established a standard for those categories, and then we measure that data every year. And if we hit those data targets, then all staff members in the district receive a one-time, one-point-five percent performance bonus if they hit, in this case, four of four targets, or if they get three of four targets, it's one percent. But these are meaningful targets. So, the targets are advanced placement testing, okay? ACT composite, and the number of students participating in extracurriculars, which we have a very high value for in this particular school district, because we know how important that is to your development as well-rounded students. So, I am happy to report tonight that the data is in from last school year, and here is how we did. In advanced placement testing, the percentage of students tested, the target number in the contract was twenty point eight, okay? It's, what we hit last year was thirty-one point three, so we obliterated that target. The percentage of students earning three fours or fives on advanced placement tests, the target is eighty-seven point seven percent of those students. We were at eighty-nine percent this year, so again, we met that target. On ACT composite, the target for us is twenty-four eight, and this year the district goes at twenty-five four, and for the board, we'll be doing a more extensive look into our advanced placement and ACT data at our September meeting moving forward. That's very, very exciting. And in extracurricular participation, the contract goal is ninety point two percent, and in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we hit ninety-one point four percent, and that's the total number of students involved in fall, winter, and spring sports. So, again, we met those criteria. So, as a result of that, I'm certifying to the board that the staff of District One Twenty-eight and our students have met the performance recognition bonus targets, and I'll be coming back to you next month, and we'll ask you to authorize the payment of that bonus, which will be done the first week of December prior to the winter holidays. So, congratulations to everyone again. Very meaningful targets for us here, and we're very proud of the staff and the students for their work in these areas. So, great job to all of you. Next on the agenda tonight is approval of the FY sixteen budget. A few comments about the budget before we begin this evening. Again, for the community, about three or four weeks ago, as we have done for a number of years in this district, we had a dedicated board meeting where we just dealt with the FY sixteen budget, spent about three and a half hours of that meeting digging deep into the budget as we have in the past. We had a follow-up meeting a couple of weeks later on our committee meeting evening, where we spent another roughly hour and a half on the budget. There are a couple of things that we all need to remain aware of. There is no budget agreement in Springfield yet. So, we don't know what the grand bargain will be, whether that will include a property tax freeze, which would freeze our revenue at current levels for at least a couple of years. We don't know if there will be a pension cost shift. We don't know those answers yet, because there's been no movement in Springfield virtually all summer on the budget. So, the budget that we have worked through in the revenue projection side is a very conservative budget. We think that's the way we need to look at this. If those dynamics change, and they will at some point in Springfield, and we have a better picture, then we will come back and have further discussion about the budget, and then we can amend the budget. The revenue projections for the budget, as the board knows, before the community's benefit again, the board for the past few years has been abating or not collecting some of the taxes that legally the district could have collected, and the modus operandi behind that or the philosophy was that we are trying to match our revenues with our expenses and not take much more than that for the benefit of the taxpayers. So, the board and administration has done a lot of work over the last few years in terms of abating taxes. This current budget that we've been working on assumes that we would do a two-point This current budget that we've been working on assumes that we would do a two-point, roughly $2.9 million, what we're calling a catch-up abatement, plus this year's abatement of between $5.5 and $6 million. We know from earlier discussion with the board that we worked out three potential scenarios, that we would do both of the abatements, that we would, scenario number two, we would only abate the catch-up amount. And scenario number three, depending on what the state throws our way, might be to abate nothing this year and just go as we would normally. So, that's how the budget is built. Your adoption of the budget tonight does not indicate that we are adopting a tax levy tonight. This particular budget is just predicated on our previous conversations. So, you are not voting on the tax levy tonight. We will continue that discussion as we get more information and look at which of the three options best suits not only our short-term, but the district's long-term needs, depending on what the state gets us moving forward. And with that said, as kind of an overview, Yasmin's going to walk us through a summary that I believe she has given out. The board asked us to reduce the budget another million dollars. And Yas has done that. I've reviewed those cuts. We've done that without, you know, impacting the instructional program directly. And we know moving forward now, in the environment that we're in, that our projected budget moving forward for next year will not be more than the CPI. This is assuming that we do not have a property tax freeze, will not be higher than the CPI in any of our major categories in the overall budget. So, we have that direction from the board now and we will work on that. Really, after we get school open, we'll start talking about next year's budget. But we're going to need to get more information from the state on the revenue side, so we can see what we're looking at in terms of building that budget. And we will continue to stay on top of that story as it develops. So, Yasmin, with that, I'll let you do the overview and then we'll see what questions the board has.
Sure. As per your directive, when we last reviewed the budget a couple of weeks ago, as Dr. Lee stated, instructions to us was to go back and take a look at the budget and see if we could at least trim a million dollars out of it. Our focus, when we were looking at where to make some adjustments, was to make every effort so that it would not touch the instruction program, that the students would not be impacted by any of the adjustments made in the classroom. With that end, we looked at a number of departments. And the departments that had their budgets adjusted include the information technology area, media, the community education, public relations. We looked at internal services, the business office, fiscal services, buildings and grounds, transportation, and some special education costs that were for our external programs. To that end, the areas that were affected by the adjustments were in software. We decided in the business office to defer some upgrades that we were intending to make, especially in light of some of the changes that are coming from the federal government. In talking to Dr. Fisher, we looked at textbooks and determined that we have been able to purchase a number of textbooks for the previous year, for this year, out of the previous year's budget. So, we were able to trim some dollars there. We looked at some large replacements of projectors in the large areas of the auditorium or the gymnasium. And with assistance from Mick Torres, it was determined that we could defer a new replacement for another year. We also looked at our printing budget and the fact, as was stated by the students, that, you know, we're moving away from paper, more into electronics versions of things. So, we were able to trim some costs there, as well as the replacement of copiers. Both go hand in hand. I also looked at the age of the vehicles, the fleet here, and there was a little room in there also to cut back. And as you know, with the price of oil going down daily, adjustments were made to the utility cost, as well as the gasoline that is used by our fleet. One of the cutbacks that we may have to come back to you for was a certain amount is set aside for emergency services, in case something does go wrong in the building. We tap into those reserves and those were cut back to zero.
Yasmin, let me make one comment about that. What I would ask the board to consider as you're doing the budget tonight, much like we do with ESP staffing and we do with certified staffing, I always ask the board, over and above our allocation, for 1.0 additional staffing in the event that we have an overload in a class and we have to create another section, et cetera, et cetera. And we always report out to the board. We would need access to some contingency dollars. So, what I would ask the board is, once you voted on the budget, assuming that you do that tonight, that you allow us, in theory, $100,000 in contingency that we would only use in an emergency, before we have to come back to you and we'll report out on that in the budget cycle of this year. So, anytime we had to use that, we would let you know that as part of our reporting out, much like we do with staffing at the end of the year. But that would give us the latitude if we ran into a problem, if we had a roof issue in the middle of the year, if we had a flood at Libertyville, if John had some issue here in Vernon Hills that needed to be rectified immediately. But not to keep that as a line item, but to give us a working number that we could use. And it's the same concept of the additional staffing that we rarely have had to use. So, go ahead, Yas.
The other areas that I looked at, in addition to contingency, as you recall, we had taken some funds from the utility line item and put those in contingency of 375. Those were eliminated. If you add the other 100, you know, that would help too. Also looked at supplies, also looked at contractual services, where I was able to reduce some budget amounts there. The other things that are just small amounts from here and there, but the total amount of reductions ended up to be just slightly over $1 million. And I have provided you with two sheets. One is the blue sheet, which shows you what the expenditure budget was at August 10th, when we had the budget hearing, as well as a detailed discussion on the budget. The reductions in the line items, the reductions were made in, and the new budget at $1 million less, at $88.8 million. And just a reminder, that also includes $1 million for the DSL initiative that the students have talked about earlier too. The golden rod sheet that you have in front of you details the revenue by funds, as well as the expenditure by funds. And it shows you whether the fund for just this fiscal year is whether it's in a deficit or a surplus situation. Including the comments also are the abatements that were taken from the previous year's tax abatements, as well as the projected or discussed, previously discussed abatements. Capital projects, then are the large capital projects that we have discussed there. I'm showing that part of the funds for that do come from the operation and maintenance account. And bond and interest at this time, unless you choose not to abate it, it shows that we'll be transferring $4 million from the working cash fund, as well as using the fund balance that is currently in that particular account to make the payment for this fiscal year. So, once again, revenues at $83.2 million, which is reflective of about $8 million of abatements, and expenditures of $88.8 million, which includes $3.7 million for capital projects that are not funded by a special levy.
So, there are a couple of key points I just want to repeat, report, or talk back or say back to the board after our conversations. First, we appreciate the forum that we have those conversations in. We think those are very productive discussions, I believe you do too, from conversations we've had. But we know, moving forward, that we only want to collect the taxes in concept. We want to collect the taxes. If everything else is equal and we don't have property tax freezes, we want to collect only the revenue that will meet our expenses to run the district and that we will not be borrowing from the reserves on a regular basis to pay normal operating expenses. The second thing is the concept of the watchword, the difference between what we want and what we actually need. Do we have the opportunity to put some purchases off? And much of the work that Yas has done and we've reviewed since we met last time was along those lines. And I'm here to tell you that John and Marina are great to work with at the buildings in terms of that concept. And that's what will continue to drive us moving forward. And we know what the parameters are now. And we fully expect that, once they make some decisions in Springfield, we will be back to you on the budget. And we're probably going to look at an amended budget. And then we're certainly going to have more discussion on the tax levy, which we want to try and get tied up, no doubt, other than the, our board meeting in October. If we can make that happen, Springfield will cooperate with us. So, with that said, we're open to questions from the board.
Okay, so just to clarify then, tonight's action is to approve the budget, which is essentially just approving the spending side of the equation. Because we're not actually addressing, I mean, I think you've got revenues in here too, but...
Right. The document that you, if you choose to approve tonight, is the, is the document which requires us to detail the revenues as well as the expenditures on that as a document. But you're right, most of the emphasis here is on the expenditures.
Just for my, just for my own clarification, once again, can you go through abatements? What's in, what is assumed? I just want to make sure I truly understand that, because that is a lever that we will be discussing over the next several months. That's correct?
That is correct. Last year, when we were approving the levy process, we had looked at any future abatements that would take place. And at that time, we were discussing the fact that the catch-up abatement would be over a period of two years, two fiscal years. So, last year was year one, and this, assuming that it still is going to happen, is year two. We also discussed in late fall last year that we would continue the abatement of bond and interest. That assumption is built into this budget. Once again, those are just assumptions and discussions that had happened last year. They in no way obligate you as a board to make those decisions the way they were discussed last year.
Okay, let me describe this follows. This budget assumes two things. One, our bond and interest obligations next year are $5.8 or $5.9 million. And we are not going to take in any revenue to satisfy that obligation.
That is what was discussed, yes. And that's what the budget reflects.
Okay. And then the second part of this is that our budget at least proposes that we would also essentially self-fund, meaning we're not going to take taxpayer money, to the tune of about another $3 million, which was the so-called catch-up for previous year's bond and interest.
That's correct.
Okay, so does that make sense?
That's the 1.5 and the 1.5.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, in essence, there's $5.8 million in bills coming in in the next year that we're not going to get any money coming in to pay. And we're actually also choosing to pay off $3 million that we took beforehand.
Correct.
All right.
And when will we make that, the final decision on whether to report?
You can be making it in the next month or so. We have actually until October, but I don't want to take this...
Yes, in September, I'll bring you various scenarios for you to look at, various options to look at as to the impact on the district, as well as the impact on the tax rate. And then the discussions really will be finalized by October, if we wish to adopt the levy in November.
So, the bottom line there is if we decide to abate something different, to abate something different than what's indicated in this budget, then we'd have to amend the budget at that point in time to reflect whatever abatements we choose.
Correct. Or if you didn't, or if you didn't abate them.
Right. And the budget can be amended at any time, so you could really do it as late as June 30th, if you so choose to do it. Obviously, we would monitor what's going on, as Prantice said, in Springfield, and then see its impact on our revenue cycle too.
I think what's pretty clear, and we've been following this conversation, as you have in the media and in our conversation with legislators, it's pretty obvious that part of the grand bargain is going to include, we believe, two things at this point. It's going to include at least a two-year property tax freeze. And it's going to include, on the other side, the allowance of broadening the tax base through some additional taxes. So, why do we, why do we believe that? Speaker Madigan, on a number of occasions, has put a property tax freeze on the floor of the House. Okay, with only a couple of, many Democrats voted for that. And with only a few, a handful of Republican votes, it would have passed. The Republicans simply are choosing not to vote at this time, because they would like to see more of Governor Rauner's Illinois First Change Agenda passed at that. So, they have not voted at all on the bill. So, it's pretty clear, because the Republicans would like to have the property tax freeze and the Democrats, in large numbers, have already voted for it, that that's likely going to happen. And on the other side, the Democrats would hold out for broadening the tax base, bringing more revenue in that way. And the governor has said he's open to that, if they'll pass his change agenda. So, at some point, there'll be a grand bargain moving forward. So, at this point, if you were to ask us for a recommendation, it would be, we need to be somewhat defensive until we see what's going to happen and probably even after, we see what's going to happen. The difficulty with a property tax freeze, while it's good for all of us as homeowners, is that, once you have a property tax freeze for a couple of years, you're not going to have taxpayers volunteering to raise their taxes the following, the third year. So, then it becomes a political issue again, and that's where it becomes problematic. So, you can lay out some scenarios here that are pretty dire, moving forward on the revenue side for property taxing bodies, you know, as we move forward. But hopefully, in the next, you know, four to six weeks, we're going to have some movement down there toward the grand bargain, the two lynchpins. And, you know, we can build off of that and we can see if the second shoe drops in the form of a pension cost shift, re-doing the school funding formula. There are a number of things on that list that I've discussed with the board, you know, over the past year or so. We'll just have to see at this point.
And just to clarify, so with 0.80% inflation, I mean, essentially for the first year of a property tax freeze, it's, I mean, I'm obviously surprised that the state politicians haven't really jumped on the property tax freeze thing, because no inflation, property tax freeze are kind of one of the same. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not zero money, I get that. But if ever there was a year to just say, yeah, I'm going to be the hero, I'm going to freeze property taxes, now's the year, because it's kind of, it's the same thing.
It is. What is unclear though, if the property freeze would include new construction or not, or whether, in our case, if we have abated, whether we can restore it, so those kind of things are still...
So, I mean, there are some small differences, but it's not like we were looking at, you know, the opportunity to raise revenue 3% or 4% and all of a sudden, we're sitting there with a huge hole.
Right.
So, at least for the one year, it's not, not a huge issue.
And next year too, looks like low CPI.
Maybe more of days like today, so I'm going to, you know, today and Friday.
And I also think it's important for our communities to know that this concept of abatement, you know, adds up pretty quickly of not collecting taxes that we could. It's a different argument than whether we should collect them, but legally, that you could collect them under PTL or property tax caps at this point. But if you go back, I think, four years now, Yas, we were at $2 million, we were at $4 million. We're splitting the one year that we did abate up over, conceptually, three years. So, that's $2.9 million. And then we had a large abatement, again, almost $6 million, and we lowered the tax rate on top of that. So, as a number of people in the business have told us, there's not a taxing body in the state that's ever done that at that level. And, you know, the board should be complimented for that and I suppose we all should for working on, on that together. However, you know, there's some reality that's kind of going on at the state and federal level that we just need to continue to pay attention to. And so, we would be in the second year this year of the three-year kind of projected levy abatements that we have looked at. And we're just going to need to take a careful look at that against what's happening, you know, in Springfield down the line. And Pat, you're correct, inflation is pretty low this year, CPI is pretty low. So, we'd be different if it were 2.8 or 3%. Then that hit would be a lot larger. Fortunately, we are in a position that we have worked really hard over the last 10 years on a long-range financial plan that has factored some of those possibilities in. And we do have some reserves if we would need, you know, if we would need to go there in the short term. But to the larger point, we can't run the district over a long period of time by doing that. You know, Scott, as I think you would say, that's the death spiral after a period of time. And 20 years from now, the district would be in a much different place than it is now.
I congratulate the board for what they've done historically. Just to reiterate, you know, you're holding things pretty well flat to, you know, the rate of inflation. But I also, we've discussed this, the teacher salaries are not being held to that same rate because we're contractually obligated. I'm not saying it's nothing wrong, it's the right thing to do. But we can't also be, you know, say, well, that's different. That still comes out of this budget. And over time, we have to continue to make sure that we're not building that number deeper and deeper. And that's... deeper and deeper, and that's the concern I think we all should have.
Okay. Two other quick questions. So, the $3 million essentially, the so-called catch-up, by abating that this year, what does, I'm still not clear, what does that do to us in future years in terms of bringing in revenue?
There is a provision in the property tax law that basically states that a school district or any municipality that abates or has a lower tax base can look back three years to see if there's a higher tax base and use that for the extension purposes. So your extension, obviously CPI extension would be based on the higher year as opposed to the most recent year.
Okay, so for all intents and purposes, it is a one-time event?
It's a one-time.
Okay, that's the part I wanted to clarify. And then a sec, the last thing is, the only other thing I'm concerned about in this is really the fund balances where we're actually taking them funds for the abatement, right? And if we, I guess one question, so O&M is favorable, for example.
Right.
Right? Why would we not have taken the abatement money out of the funds that are favorable first and then gone to the other ones?
The O&M fund, we use to supplement the capital projects, so...
Our year-to-year capital projects.
A year-to-year capital projects. So, even though there is a slight adjustment in there, a slight balancing, that is not known at the time of the levies being done as to what a capital projects would be. And if you look back here, we have cut back about half a million dollars' worth of expenses just out of O&M, when you look at utility cost and gasoline and things like that. So most of the savings really is reflected from there. We looked at the transportation fund, as you recall, and we wanted to really adjust the balance in there, the fund balance in there, so that was one of the reasons for it going in the transportation fund. We, I did not adjust anything in the IMRF or the social security, because we have to make sure that there is, those two funds, although they're combined, in one fund on our books are kept separately and that there's sufficient funds in both of them to meet the obligations. Working cash is easier to keep money in there because it enables us to be able to transfer from working cash to other funds if needed. So it's like a rainy day fund for us. Other than that, is the education fund, and once again, when you look at the fund balance that is accumulated in there, that seemed to be the most appropriate fund to take it out of. Next year, maybe it might be different, but I do know that at least the transportation fund will be one that we're looking, we will be looking at to abate in.
Okay. That one I'm still thinking about, but I guess we could talk about that further, right?
All right.
If we, yeah, go ahead.
I intend to cast a yes vote for the budget tonight, but I continue, no surprise, to be dead set against any kind of abatement whatsoever until we know what's really going on in Springfield. So, I look forward to our future discussions in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah. So, I'm not really a betting man, but the only thing, I respect that, I'm not going to challenge that, but my guess is between now and when we do have to take action, we're not going to know a whole lot more. Okay? We need to at least be prepared for that, okay? Maybe I'm wrong, and the next 60 days, amazing things will happen. All in favor? Well, we'll see. I think, but I do think there's at least some risk that we'll have to make a decision without having a lot more information than we have today, but, you know, we'll see.
And in the past, the county has been accommodating in the fact that you may pass a levy for a certain amount, but still be able to submit a resolution abating a certain amount too.
Okay. All right, so we'll see. Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, otherwise, immediate motion, correct?
Yes, and as we do the motion for the budget, yes, you can walk us through that. Do we need to do one for A and B, or if we approve the budget, are we taking care of certificate of revenues and attestation of the budget?
If we could just say that we're approving the budget as well as the certificate and the attestation, would we take that?
Okay, great. And then the second concept that I asked the board to consider tonight is to give us $100,000 for contingencies if we need that, only if we need that, and we would report that out to you and track that, you know, over and above the budget.
So, tell me what, I remember you asked me about that, and I said, "Okay, but what does that mean? Does that mean you actually want to increase the budget $100,000?"
By $100,000, yes. Which is not reflective of the $88.8 million that you see in front of you. So the document that we will be submitting to the state of Illinois and to the regional office would indicate that the budget is actually, expenditure side of it is 88,940,000 as opposed to 88,840,000.
All right, so again, let me put that in context. The expectation is you won't spend that money, you'll come in $100,000 favorable, and therefore the decision is really one of mechanics, so that we don't have to be in this position of amending the budget if the unforeseen thing occurs.
That is correct.
We're not really authorized with spending $100,000.
You're not.
This is based on your ability to bucket money.
That is right, to have money somewhere.
Let me rephrase that, categorize money. Bucket was pretty good.
And just to put it in context for Scott, in the history of my time here, I don't know that we ever did them in the contingency form.
We did one year for some security cameras, but that was at least 12, 13 years ago. And Scott, just so you know, there was a time we had, we used to have close to $1 million in contingency in the budget, so $100,000.
Good old days.
You can see, we've come a long ways. And I think the other thing about contingencies, we take that, as we do with staffing, we take that very seriously. And if we had an expense, if we had the flood at LHS again, hopefully we never have that again, and we had some major emergency expenses, obviously that would get us going, but we would have to, we would come to the board, so if...
Oh, if it flooded again, we could get the students down there, I'm sure these guys would have...
They'll bail it out. But the idea would be that if we need something that's over $100,000, as we have always said, we would come to the board and make the case for that, and give you a rationale for that, have a discussion with you, and then you can thumbs up or thumbs down our requests. So the idea, again, is just a working, we have a working amount. I would have final approval on any expenditure of contingency, and of course, we would report that out to you. But Pat, you're right, historically, I've been here 10 years, and I think that's the only time that we've done that, even with some of the other, you know, kind of emergencies that we've dealt with in the past.
Okay. All right, any else? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve the budget?
I move that we approve the attestation of the budget presented and the certificate of revenues anticipated.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Benson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Gruddy?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, good job, I know that was a rapid link and thorough process that we've gone through.
No, we're not done yet, though. It's the gift that keeps on giving.
We still have the harder discussion to come up with, but, you know, still, it was a lot of hard work.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Rob, and just before we leave this, I want to compliment the board again for their work with us, because even on the levy, we spent considerable amount of time on the levy. We do have three options to look at, depending on the factors that we're going to have to deal with. And, you know, you should be complimented for the depth of that discussion and for your discussion with us on that and looking at all those factors. So, thanks very much. And to finish, the superintendent's report, the very short superintendent's report, that's what we get for putting the budget under the superintendent's report. The board will note that we did have one freedom of information request in your package tonight, and with that, Pat?
It's going to take forever to gather all that stuff.
It does take forever to gather it.
It was sent to a number of school districts.
Yeah, I looked at that and go, what a way to just keep busy.
It's, yes...
I felt bad, I just think of the distraction.
It is that, and we take our, we're required to take our office staff, obviously, off of the jobs that we need to do every day, so. Anyway, Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak?
None.
Next, a consent vote agenda is listed. If I can ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Gruddy?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee, remember Benson?
Okay, yeah, good. We have a couple items here. Second reading of Board Policy Number 2,250, Access to District Public Records, and Policy 5,290, which is Employment, Termination, and Suspension Policy. Do we have to do these separate motions? One, yeah, that's right. Never mind. We can do these in one motion, I think. So this is for the second reading and adoption of these two policies.
So we just need a motion to redact the two policies.
Second. Any discussion, further discussion, Collins? Okay, we have roll call, please.
Gruddy?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Gruddy?
Aye.
And I have no other, unless anyone else has, another for Program Personnel? Nope.
Okay, you were up again?
And Facilities and Finance, nothing that we need to consider tonight? Anything under the other category?
I would just note for the record, in 10 years here, we have never had a board meeting where we have had nothing under Facilities and Finance to actually vote on.
This just doesn't seem right, no, just last name.
We got a lot...
We're holding back here, Jess?
I think that's... He's leaving a clean desk, that's what I'm saying.
Well, we got Brainerd done, and we've cut the budget back, so there's nothing left to spend, right? Okay, so it's good. Everything's good.
So that concludes the Facilities and Finance Committee report.
All right, no property on CNO?
I gave each of you a copy of the significant terms of the tentative agreement between the board and the union for the contract. The highlights are here. This was, you know, put together by the executive committee and will be voted on on Wednesday.
Union's approved here.
And, you know, the committee, the governing board members and the superintendents that are part of that committee have done much like we do, you know, subcommittee, all the hard work of putting this forward, and I...
It's good.
You see the different things that they have, so there's lots of different things that we can...
Thank you very much. All right, anything else? I think that's it. CNO, ESP, that's it. All right, any other sessions? All right, motion to appear, please.
So move.
Second, all in favor? All right, thanks very much, good night, everybody.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Great job.